The line painting is completed and delineated, but the ballards and handicap signs are not yet installed. But everything else other than the handicap signs and landscaping is complete. So I would recommend that the board give permission for Michael and I to endorse the temporary CO that Ralph issues.
Can you hold on the phone?
Sure.
Because I don't know. It's not connected.
However you can get them. So I'd like a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend the building inspector issue a temporary certificate of occupancy for the five-star collision, provided that the necessary work identified in SWU Cole's progress report dated April 5th, 2024 is completed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Paul's sleeping.
I was thinking Paul.
Okay, let's move on. Pine Ridge Estates, 40B, file number 24-015-40B, request for comment. If you look at the plans in your packet, you'll see what looks pretty familiar. It looks like the independent living facility application we had some months ago from Brian Corey. And this is a 40B proposing 38 single-family houses on small lots with 10% or 10% of affordable units as per 40B's requirement. I don't know what kind of comment we're supposed to give, but...
The town administrator has requested any general comments to be forwarded to his office. I've already sent him the staff review that was done for the previous site plan that was submitted with this, which was somewhat different. There were duplexes proposed in that, and this is all a single-family. I also forwarded the engineering review from the previous proposal and also the departmental comments. So if there are any other comments that the board would specifically like to have addressed with the town administrator, he's requested those comments to be forwarded to him.
So I guess the... The planning board can only give our opinion because this is going to go before the zoning board for approval. I would hope that we could lend the services of the planning board to the zoning board to help them through this process. It is... We need housing. We need housing support. This is pretty tight. Do you know how many acres are in the total area?
I should say on the cover sheet.
Well, it's on three different lots. Looking at it on my small computer is very difficult.
It looks like they use the 25 acres for it, but I think about 117 acres possible to the right of it.
Right.
I mean, my...
And it looks like they're... Have a spur of the last... after the last cul-de-sac on the right that's going to go into that empty field.
They do.
So...
West Port Lakes Road, is that now... Is that an accepted road? Is that a private way? Whose road is it? I mean, I was down there and still finding it.
It is. It's narrow and it's not in good shape and I have no idea what the status is of it.
I think it was... I think it wasn't supposed to be accepted.
I don't think it... Well, I don't think it has been accepted.
I think when it was... When they did it, it was kept private. So I think that there's a lot of people living on it now. I actually got a couple of calls.
Correct.
Now, yeah. But so I think it was before they had associations too. I don't know what it's going to be. I'm sure David's coming in from... Could concern all of us.
I am sure, but we're not going to be here.
Yeah, that's true.
So I think the things to have the town look out for are the stormwater issues based on all single-family houses. Is there going to be a homeowners association to take care of the stormwater and the roads? Are they going to propose that the town accept this road, these roads? And the wastewater. It looks like they have a common leach field, but their proposal before was to have individual septic tanks which then were piped into a leach... A common... Two common leach fields. And... I assume because it's new construction that they all have to be denitrified, but I don't know what 40B has to do with that requirement. It's a board health requirement. I... It's not a... It's not a... The P requirement.
They'll request a waiver.
I'm sure they will. And I would strongly suggest that they use a...
Community.
A community system like in Okeechobah Village, which is similar size. It would be just, I think, just under 10,000 gallons a day.
Oh, no. Not... If these are... If these are not... The proposal before would make them age-restricted, therefore they snuck under the...
10,000.
Under the 10,000. These are...
Two or three bedrooms.
Yeah, these are two or three bedrooms, 38 units. So, you know, you're up in the teens. This needs a groundwater... This needs a treatment plant and a groundwater discharge permit.
So that's what I would suggest. And I assume that the board of health can... No. The board of health can't require that. I think the zoning board could try.
Well, that's a state law, so they can actually apply the state law. 40B doesn't overrule the state law, only locals don't.
Right. But the board of health, when we did Okeechobah, asked the planning board to have a requirement on a special permit because they couldn't require it. And...
That would be for the D90, but not for a permit step. Bob's talking about the thing that they're going to need to comply with. State and federal permits.
So the question that I can't answer myself is if they're sharing the leach field, does that put them in the category of being required to have a groundwater discharge?
Yes, if they're over... If they're over the flow. Then they're required to have a treatment plant. If you have a treatment plant that's discharging into the groundwater and you get a groundwater discharge permit, you have to do all the mounting analysis and all of that. So I think they're stuck with that. And then, you know, the existing homes down close to the road. These wetlands are all on the side hill. They're sloping down towards the existing West Port Lakes Road. And, you know, that... Stormwater management needs to be...
And then having 38 wells.
And so it doesn't show any wells or something. It really doesn't show how they deal with water or with water. Is this any different than what we saw long ago?
The buildings are different.
Oh, yes.
There were some duplexes and the building configurations themselves are different. I think it was the same number of housing units?
So one of the reasons I ask is we made a lot of comments when we first saw this, and are those comments relevant to forward to the... Who's that from the board of select?
Yeah, I believe so. And I think they're sending all those comments with their comments.
So are our earlier comments irrelevant to forward to the board of select? Because this is largely the same.
I mean, just as a piece of planning, this is a lousy piece of planning.
Yeah, that's the technical term, right? Lousy.
This is not producing... Yes, we need housing, but this is not the type of housing that we need to produce.
Some of these lots are less than 10,000 square feet.
Yeah.
But the 40B process was under the ZVA. That's all announced, we're here with you, kind of like what does with us. And I believe the town has a 40B attorney looking for them and the local have a 40B attorney for them.
Right.
So all these things should be addressed. Kind of similar, the same process of what we took here and look over there.
Right, and that's why I'd like to lend our help to that because it's not so easy.
You know, there's nothing shown as to the water supply for these homes.
Right.
And then...
Or the wastewater.
And then, since this is not aid-restricted, this would trigger a wastewater treatment plant under Title V. That's a whole separate process. They have to describe how they're going to comply with that as they ask for the special permit.
With Rix Landing, they had an application for 40B and it was 200 and some odd units. It went through a year or two of meetings and then the zoning board denied it. It went to court and that took a couple of years, but then it was approved for 89 units on 30 acre lots, which is totally different than what this is already. So on 30,000 square foot lots, you can probably find a place for a while on a septic, maybe. But it's... It is where it is, so... So I think we need to forward the comments that we had before, which I think are still relevant because they're basically the same.
Yep.
But the bigger question is the wastewater and the stormwater. Because if you look on the chart on the wall, the two big squares on the bottom are the shared leach fields for everybody.
Wastewater and water supply, I think, as well.
Well, there's a couple of... There's a retention pond up there near the intersection of the road.
So the stormwater and the wastewater, those were issues that were similarly discussed at the planning board hearing when they had brought it under the independent living facility bylaw. That's all reflected in the staff review. So the town administrator has those comments, but I'll make sure to underscore that when I write them down.
And to make sure that we distinguish between when it was aid-restricted, they snuck under the 10,000. Now they're over.
My other thing too would be with the West Port Lakes Road. We figure out who's going to own West Port Lakes Road, if it's going to stay property lines.
Right.
I'm hoping to get it accepted.
And, you know, I think we have to point out that it's never been finished.
And is there any shorting left on?
There must be a history. This road was created under a subdivision, I guess.
Yes, it was. It was supposed to be a golf course.
Right. I don't know where...
The golf course was... The fairways were going to be on people's lots. And it turned in that that wasn't allowed, so... But they still did the road and haven't finished it.
Yeah, we heard from a butters who live on West Port Lakes Road complaining about the condition of the road. Unfinished and potholes. Was it adequate to support this additional number of homes? And in fact, the future expansion is they're angling for.
Because this is basically a dead end off of a dead end. I think they... If they can do it, the zoning board should ask for traffic study.
Does it come back here after zoning?
It does not.
Okay. Do we need a motion to forward this stuff?
No.
Are we ready for Philip or is he's not?
We're having some technical issues, so I asked him if we could reschedule. He said he could come in person next time or try to do it virtually. So I think we'll go with the in-person route next time.
Good idea. Okay. Pine Ridge Estates, request for comments. Oh, that's what we just did. Chapter 61, release file number 24-014CH61A. Select Board is requesting comments on Chapter 61A release owned by Paul Mann, located at 20 Kelsey's Way, map 67 Lot 7C. And I don't believe it's in 61A. I believe it's in 61B or C. But I don't know if this... If that means anything. This is a lot which is currently a small parcel, 20-some-odd acre parcel that they have horses on. It's just west of the metal recycling, the big metal recycling place on Shore Lederway Road, just off of Main Road.
Yep.
And I've spoken with Ross Moreno to see if he feels that there's any conservation benefit from this, that the town could exercise their option or give the option to a nonprofit. And he felt, after looking at it this afternoon, with the price and the fact that it's next to the metal recycling, it could be contaminated from that. There's probably little conservation value. And that... Because of that, he didn't think it was worth pursuing. So I agree with that. However, I think Kirby Brook goes through the property. And Kirby Brook is, I think, one of the cold water streams we have that goes into the East Branch. So... You'd have to have a willing nonprofit or the town would have to have the money to buy it. It's 849,000. So I don't know how much of Kirby Brook goes through the metal recycling place and through this property. But I'd like some input.
The mapping, I'm looking at our web map, the headwaters of Kirby Brook start slightly to the north of this property. And then it flows northward and then goes around a bend and goes down towards Main Road. So the headwaters are not actually on this parcel.
Okay. Okay, so I would... I would think that we sign off on the planning boards.
There's not a public interest in acquiring it at that price.
Right.
So can this... Presumably, can Kelsey's Way then be used as access for further subdivision of the lot?
It could.
And...
I don't know the status of Kelsey's Way.
You have to figure out what that is.
Kelsey's Way is a private road. I don't know if there was ever a homeowners association established between the three property owners that... There... Actually, it's four. Four that use that road for access. So they would have to negotiate something, the owners of those properties, in order to gain access to some of that parcel further.
So the people buying it, I think, are the same people that bought Simmons Store in Amso.
Yep.
And so I don't know what they intend to do with it. I don't think...
Their primary residence, I believe, is in Florida and they have a restaurant down there and a farm. And it's a lot of farm to table. So I would... I would think that maybe they're looking to do something similar on that property. Maybe provide the store with some fresh whatever.
They also have a house in Harbor.
Atlantic. Where?
In Westport Harbor.
On Atlantic Avenue.
On Atlantic Avenue, right next to the Peak Club.
So this... I mean, it doesn't affect us, but it doesn't have anything to do with this Huizenga Holdings. They're just the... The buyer is... His business address, I guess, is care of the vice president of Huizenga Holdings in West Palm Beach.
I think he's... He's something to do with the Miami Dolphins.
Yeah.
This gentleman.
Huizenga.
Well, Huizenga's dead.
Well, whatever.
But he did...
This is his daughter.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'm just curious.
Okay, so I'd like to take a motion to give our opinion as we should release it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we forward to the select board that we have no objection to the release of land owned by Paul Mann at 21 Kelsey's Way from Chapter 61A.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rita Lane Extension, file number 19-001C. Road acceptance, endorse Mylar Plan.
This may have been included from an old agenda item. This is out of the planning board's hands at this point. The planning board had given us the select board comment on the acceptance of Rita Lane and Rita Lane was accepted as a town road at town meeting. So at which point it's up to the town to acquire any necessary easements as a part of that... As a part of that roadway acceptance and to actually acquire the property. But that's for the select board to work out. It's not something for the planning board to address.
Okay. Next is 615 Public Hearing for Corey Ridge Estates, file number 23-035C, continued from November 14th, '23, January 23rd, '24, March 19th, '24. Request by the applicant to consider a definitive subdivision plan entitled "Definitive Subdivision Corey Ridge Estates Located at 265 Cornell Road, AP 81 Lot 4, Proposing to Divide the Property of the Four Lots."
Strongly for Northeast Engineers, applicant Corey Ridge Estates. This is a revised plan that was revised in March by comments from the town consultant, by the consultant from SWU Cole. At the time of the initial hearing, we proposed to have a gravel road that goes up hammerheads and services three lots to the rear of the property. There's an existing house on the front of the property. We asked for several waivers at the time, reduced just about all the waivers except the ones that pertain to gravel road. So the first item that... We have an existing conditions plan. This is all pretty much open field up to here and it's very sparsely wooded in here. Goes down to a wetland, you can barely see a wetland slide over here. That was one of the comments that was addressed, it's had the wetlands flagged. There was a comment from a butter about regarding a large tree that's right... It's actually a split tree where half of it is on the applicant's property, half is on their property. It is something we could do. So we showed that tree as part of this new existing conditions plan. We corrected, there was an issue with the wall not being shown on the property line. That's been corrected. These are the lots that we're proposing, proposing these lots. We did do test bits that are shown on the existing ditch plan and on this one. So we turn water table for drainage. We have provided easements for the town and/or interested parties to access the Corey Cemetery. This is the historic cemetery, obviously hence the name Corey Ridge Estates. We sit right on the ridge here on Cornell Road. So there are waivers we are asking for. The waivers we are asking for, there are three of them. There are four of them total, three of them regarding gravel road. One is a non-paved surface, obviously gravel road. Second is a reduction in the width from 20 feet required to 16 with two-foot gravel shoulders on each side, which gives a 20-foot width, which satisfies the fire departments. We also asked for a standard non-cross section. The standard cross section showed 20 feet of width with four feet shoulders, where it is going to 16 and two-foot shoulders. So all those waivers came to lessening the different structure to have a gravel road. The final waiver is for a waiver of a fill-up radius out here on Cornell Road. It's not necessary to provide adequate drainage, I mean adequate access as there's plenty of room for fill-ups out through Cornell Road. It's a significant distance from the property line as shown on the plan. So those are the only waivers we're asking for. We have corrected the waivers that we're asking for for water quality reduction. We can increase the size of the ponds. You can go to the next slide. We've reconfigured the ponds and have added a level spreader. And we've also increased so there's infiltration of the pond. I know the comments are coming up reducing that. So what we've done is we've reduced the peak flows off the site. This particular site sits right on a ridge here. So there's a split watershed where most of the property goes through this section. There's a boggy pond down on Cornell Road that's a significant distance from our... About a two-foot strip that rains naturally across this to across to what is now the trust pond. The land trust land over here. And there's a 50-foot strip of the butter that the water naturally flows across. So what we've done is we, as requested by the consultant, provide the water quality by infiltration, provide the reduction to 20% from pre to post-development, and we provide a level spreader to spread the water out. Right now, all the water is funneled into this little here. If you look real closely here, there's an old stone wall basin here. Most of this water flowed naturally across this property. We've reduced that by 20%. Again, it hits the drainage and hits the layout of the road. We've increased the hammerhead size at request of the consultant and we also paved or paid apron up front at the request and increased the size. So what we've done basically is beat all of what was requested by the consultant and buy the 24. We've also, I should point out, again, this tree, which was a concern of the... We've also, I should point out, again, this tree, which was a concern of the abutter, if we could save it. So instead of coming down long here with the utilities, this existing car hole here, we decided to come across here. So there will be no excavation down at the root level of the tree, uh, to save the tree. So we're gonna, at greater expense of the applicant, run along this side and cross the road and then come down the side of the road. So we don't have to interfere with the roof system of the existing large tree. To adjust the details.
So the, the boggy pond to the west, the west is up?
Yeah.
That's, that's, um, Moser Pond?
Yeah, yeah. It's about eight hundred feet down the street. But it, it, this is a very steep hill going down to that and this is significant on east side. This house, the Corey House, would build right on top of the ridge for obvious reasons, because this is nice, high, dry land and pasture in here.
Sean. You mentioned that the width of the drive, fir- first of all, it's gravel, it's imper- it's pervious.
We, it, it, the difference between the gravel, compacted gravel and the pavement is very negligible, so we consider it to be an impervious surface.
Okay. But that, um, in discussions with the fire department, uh, they found it acceptable that it be sixteen feet wide with two-foot buffers on either side?
Right. The, the requirement, uh, fire lane requirement under state code for fire is twenty feet of fire access and that's for between buildings. But it's been adopted as a twenty-foot standard for all laneways. What they want basically is to be able, if they have to pull off the road, to have twenty feet and to have a car pass. So you've had a car, a fire truck and ambulance going in, give a direction, they can do that. So the sixteen foot we proposed, they wanted, you know, can you put an extra shoulder on there? So if you have to pull off the road, you're not falling into lumps, so that would, you know, basically for a giant block. So we've had, we've added sixteen foot with two-foot gravel shoulders, lessen the impact of having a giant wide road that serves three.
So, uh, so it's sixteen feet of gravel?
And two-foot gravel shoulders.
So why isn't that twenty feet of gravel?
Well, it is, but it's not considered a travel way. In other words, it will have the standard width with the direct top dressing of the stone. Then you put on typically on a sixteen foot, on a twenty-foot gravel way, will not extend to the shoulders.
Okay. The, the reason I ask is there is massive destruction of the domes at Horse Neck. And I'm just wondering whether the DCR is running an extension of Route eighty-eight. And, uh, I was told, no, this is at the request of the fire department, uh, wanting twenty feet. And I'm trying to figure out, uh, uh, what do they need and, and what'll they accept and, and so on. This is...
I, I believe that the problem there is the domes creep very quickly onto the actual traveling way. So they're trying to keep as wide as they can. You never know when you're gonna need an emergency. If you can't decide there's an emergency, go down and clear the way, then we'll send the ambulance.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
We do have comments in it. I think it would be in the best interest of everybody to go one at a time and have you mention a comment and me address my concerns. And then reading along and going back, I think that would be the easiest way.
So, uh, Sean, is this gravel way gonna be crowned or is it gonna be sloped in one direction?
It's gonna be crowned most of the way. There is a peak. You can really see it in here. But it is crowned to go basically towards the pond, towards the little pond that's over in here. Uh, it's, you know, it's a standard pitched cross section.
Right, but if the, if the road, uh, is on this side of the ridge, if you crown it, so, can you go back one? So where's the ridge again?
The ridge, the ridge runs right through here.
Yeah, so if you have the, the road crowned to drain towards uphill, doesn't it make more sense to have it graded so it all goes in one direction?
Uh, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
In my experience with gravel roads, which I have two very long ones, that's what we do.
Yeah, so, so it is, it is crowned, but in the drainage considerations, you also have to look. This is kind of a unique situation for most subdivisions you took to see in Westport where it's not, it doesn't have a huge amount of weapons surrounding. It's very high and dry and it sits up very high. So basically, when you consider the drainage calculation, everything, you look at, okay, the ridge here and then all this water here comes across this property now. The regulations require, the town regulations require a twenty percent, at least a twenty percent reduction
Right.
from pre to post. And there's several ways of doing it. Capturing the lot up here and still letting a little bit come off one side or capturing it all and then attenuating it, as you said. If we wanted to build a massive swale in here and remove the trees that I think the abutters want to keep, uh, you could and you could direct it to the pond and then did discharge. What we proposed is we're catching most of this and most of this ridge into these ponds to get to the twenty percent reduction. This naturally flows in this direction, it's a little ridge here and it's a little hole right here. So this is going this way towards this pond and neither going toward that pond. There's very little hundred and fifty feet of, what else, what you, I think you're concerned about the crown pitching onto the next property.
No, I'm concerned about the crown trying to pitch uphill.
Oh, no, that's, in other words, you're losing the crown? Is that what you're concerned about?
No, that you would, i- if the, if the road is crowned like this and the ridge is up here, the water that's on this side of the road goes down here, but where does it go?
It goes where it goes now, naturally, but it's reduced.
It wants to go this way naturally, right?
Well, no. What it wants, see, what happens is it want, all this wants to go this way.
Right.
All this is going this way. But what's happening is we're catching it, you have to have TSS removal and you have to have reduction. So there's swales over here that catch that, but direct it back to where it's supposed to flow. Because you don't want to send this, this side of the ridge over to this side, because that's like an intro basin and that's not a good engineer.
So I see that, I mean, I see on your cross section there, you've got the swale on the, you said the west side, right?
Yes.
Uphill side is west?
Yes.
And so to answer, I mean, to Jim's point, the crown going westward from the midsection, from midpoint, drains into that swale and then the swale carries the water down, or north and south?
Yes, it does. So it's from here, there's a high point here.
Yep.
This going this way, this going that way, this catching into these, this little ridge here catching into here and this hammerhead going into this basin here. They're all coming here, but it flows naturally this way. But you're attenuating it using the ponds. You're slowing it down, the peak flows, you're removing the sediment, you're doing everything in the ponds by, which is required by the regulation and then let it go where it naturally goes now.
Yeah.
Now, the ridge is, it's still flowing to the same places from the same points, it's just flowing slower.
Right. Uh, uh, the only, uh, potential danger of that swale is that you, as you just described a minute ago, there's a sixteen-foot wide road bed and then a two-foot shoulder on each side
Right.
for emergency vehicles. And that swale on the west side starts right at that two feet. So if, uh, if a, a fire engine or something veers a little bit over that
Three feet, right.
shoulder, it's down in the ditch.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but if you go three feet instead of two feet, you're gonna be, two feet is a ditch. That's anticipating something that may or may not happen. Sixteen feet is plenty wide for two cars to pass. Maybe just requesting twenty-four. The twenty-foot is, is basically so they're not taking the mirrors and, and one of the things they asked for is one of the waivers we asked for is the clearing. This is an open field.
Yeah.
There's no vegetation hanging into the roadway or the right of way on either side.
And then as I recall, at the last meeting, there was a, on the, let's see, would be the east side of the road. There's a, there was a, something about a chain link fence that was along there.
It's a cattle fence?
Was it?
Yeah.
Cattle?
Well, it's a, you know what I mean, four-by-four square mesh fence. It's not a chain link fence.
Oh.
It's, uh, there's a picket fence that comes up here, I don't know what that's gonna be, but this running along the property line here
Yeah.
is a typical, like a four-by-four square cattle steel, cattle fence. I don't know who put that in. I don't know if it was this owner or the previous owner. It's there. There's a row of arborvitae just inside that fence as a screen. They've probably been there, I would say, six or seven years.
Okay, yeah, I just recall somebody saying, I guess they thought it was chain link fence, saying that that's not gonna be very attractive. But, but as you just described, it's, it's not that exactly. And it's hidden partially.
I don't think it's attractive, but it's been there. It's the way it's been since the applicant bought it, so. If they want to take it down, I don't think the applicant would have a problem with that, if that's a concern.
Well, what is it, what is it keeping up?
I think, I don't know if it's keeping something out or keeping something in, I'm not sure.
The abutters, uh, we can speak to that. The previous owners put it in to separate their land from our land.
Okay, there's no livestock?
No.
Just neighbors?
I think they were concerned about, um, dogs coming from the...
Land trust. We own that fifty-foot strip and then the land trust owns the, the land, uh, to the east of us.
Thanks.
And that land trust land is the access to the Haggad place, whatever it's called?
Haggad.
It's actually an access road and easement that runs that fifty-foot strip.
And it runs right along...
Right that...
Right along, right along the fence.
It runs right, right at the fence, right along where, where the drainage.
Right here. It's in that line, you can barely see it, but...
So I guess the other question I have with the stormwater, Sean, is now you're getting, uh, sheet flow from the ridge down to the bottom of the pond, right? And now, when you're gonna collect it in these two basins, it's gonna come out at, at one place?
Yeah, there's a, there's a twenty-foot level spreader and then there's a twenty-foot concrete level spreader to disperse it.
But still, there's twenty feet versus the whole thing?
It's one of the comments, yeah, I understand. The, the issue is, yes, it's coming in one spot, but it's kind of coming in one spot now. It all comes in through this, this scallop you see here. It's all coming into there. You have to also realize that there's twenty percent less of the peak flow.
Okay, so planners, can you read the comments from the engineer, one by one?
Sure. I'll, I don't know if you all have the report, but I'm gonna read just the bold comments, because those are the ones pertaining to the revised plans. Um, the applicant has proposed installing a twenty-foot spreader to reduce the concentration of flow. Considering the pre-construction surface flows were spread out over seven hun- seven hundred feet, the flows are still concentrated to twenty feet. When considering the abutting property downhill, it is about forty feet wide at that point, approximate size of the access roadway, opening to a larger area north of the property. If that owner decided to develop that property by constructing an access road two feet higher than the existing surface, it would block all flows from Corey Ridge Estates flowing to the west. That owner or the association that will be maintaining the Corey Ridge Estates drainage system would be responsible to fixing this potential problem. Requiring the applicant to obtain a flow easement slash agreement currently eliminates this problem in the future. Uh, comment number two, test pit information has been provided. These test pits know that the water table at the time of the test pits. Per the information provided, the following comments are provided. A, bottom of detention basin number two is proposed for elevation of seventy-two. Yet TP one located there shows the water table approximately at seventy-two point four. This reduces the amount of storage in this basin and eliminates any infiltration factor that may be considered. This basin should be redesigned accordingly. The bottom of detention basin number three is proposed for elevation seventy-two point zero. TP two and TP three show the water table approximately at elevations of seventy-one point three and seventy point five respectively. Any infiltration factor for this basin should not be considered. The applicant has included an additional gravel base for about one foot past the sixteen feet, therefore eighteen feet of base. The above comment required twenty feet and two feet beyond the sixteen-foot gravel road on either side. Let's see. The last comment pertaining to roof runoff from the dwelling, um, add lots three and four along with lot two and recommend that lot one also be included. That's for comment number four. The right-of-way clearing, reviewing the Google map satellite, vegetation does, does appear sparse in the area of the road. But without a plan showing the road layout along with the vegetation they want to remain, it is difficult at best to comment on this request. B, standard cross section, as noted in comment three B as above, above as a minimum. Note that based on setup shown on page forty, cross section, there is only twenty feet of usable right-of-way. Outside the twenty-foot way, there is a one-on-three sloping toward the property line, which then flows down slope and the abutting, and the abutting property. On the opposite side, there is a swale which is part of the drainage system. In the future, if the town or the association wants to upgrade the road to the current standards, it will be an expensive undertaking. As this is proposed to be a private way, recommend that the acceptance as presented must be conditioned on the road, never becoming a public way under the town of Westport. C, a gravel way. Note two on page forty allows the board to consider alternative surface materials provided it minimizes dust and provides for a durable drivable surface. Dense pack gravel or use of road milling or combination would serve as a suitable alternative that the board could consider. With this will be a private road serving only four lots, a gravel road could be considered suitable for this purpose. The board should also consider a note on the plans for approval of a plan for the roadway maintenance, especially after the winter months. D, waiver for the, is it fillet?
Yeah, fillet, yeah.
On the east side of the roadway entrance. As this portion of the roadway will be within the town's right-of-way and the responsibility of the town to maintain, this should be constructed per the town's requirements. The board should consider denying this waiver request. And those are the comments.
Good to hear.
Okay. I'm a little concerned, uh, I'll go to number two, a little concerned is more like advocating a hypothetical than actually a regulatory comment. Uh, so with the concern, I think that we just addressed, but I'll go through it again. Uh, we're installing the level spreader with the concrete level spreader to cut the road. Now, he comes up with a hypothetical situation, if they were to raise this road two feet, it would cause a problem for the water coming off, that's already coming off now. Well, if we didn't construct this and they raised this road two feet, they still have the same problem. The water, we'd be building a dike basically, causing water, they would have to address in their development plan, a way to get the drainage water down and around the same way that we're doing. It, it doesn't make a cylinder. He's proposing a hypothetical situation that goes against his own argument about the concentrated flow and what's happening here with the existing flow. Uh, he calls seven hundred feet of the roadway itself from here to here is only four hundred and fifty feet. So I'm not sure what he's talking about, but most of this is a divide here where there's an old stone wall. But this water comes down over here, it's being captured. So not all the seven hundred feet they're mentioning is being captured by these three ponds. It's only basically three hundred and fifty feet of roadway and ridge that's being captured in this pond and attenuated. So the hypothetical, like I said, the two-foot road higher, I mean, they could certainly do that, but they would have to address the stormwater drainage on their own development plan. Because you can't build a dam along your neighbor's property under naturally occurring water. It'll have to be culled or some kind of... If we go to item two, the test pit information, uh...
Sean, if I could ask a question?
Sure.
Before you go forward, I think what he's referring to is the whole length, including the retention basin on the right-hand side, which is, if you, if you combine everything down to Cornell Road, it's probably seven hundred feet. But so that, that retention basin, where's it getting the most of its water from?
Flowing naturally off the hammerhead and on the ri- from the ridge. Because what happens is, you know, mo- most of this road is coming out here to this existing pond out here. But what's happening here is to attenuate the twenty percent reduction, you have to capture some of this so there's a very shallow pond. You're trying to make it shallow as possible so it doesn't look like... what's happening here is to attenuate the twenty percent reduction, you have to capture some of this, so there's a very shallow pond, you're trying to make it shallow as possible, so it doesn't look like a giant hole in the ground. And this one is catching the inside of the roadway, both of which are coming to a point that already wears discharges. But with what we're doing is attenuating the peak flow by twenty percent over what's existing now. Okay, so item two, test pit information. Is there any chance, Amy, that you have that planned?
I sent it to Michael. It's just one sheet, correct?
Yeah, it's just one sheet, so I wanted to show. So, there's some fuzzy math going on here, and I'll go through it. Because what happens, we have test pits that we did prior to the development, two of which fall inside these ponds here, which are the guidance, were the guidance for what the development plan was. So.
Give me one second.
You sure?
Oh, okay.
Can you just move me to the two ponds that. Okay, that'd be great. And we can revise these plans to show, what we've added is the spot shots, have the test pits themselves, but I don't know if he's interpreting it correctly or what's happening here. So, let's look at the retention basin number two, which is mentioned in the first one. We have a proposed bottom of pond is seventy-two. The test pit elevation is seventy-three point one, it's inside the seventy-four contour, there's a little depression here. There's a thirty-six inch water table here, seventy-three minus three feet, thirty-six inches, is seventy point one. He's telling us that it's seventy-one point three. So, we're seventy point one, we're closing the bottom of the pond to be seventy-two or two feet above the groundwater, which is acceptable under the stormwater and infiltration standards. So, I'm not sure where his numbers are coming from. Second basin, test pit number three, has a forty inch water table up here, and the elevation there is seventy-three point four, this between the seventy-three contour and the seventy-four contour. You do quick math, three point two five feet is forty inches, you track it from seventy-three down to seventy again, and the bottom of the pond is at seventy-two, so we're two feet above the groundwater. And this is seasonal high groundwater bottom. He's showing it to be seventy-two point four, and I'm not sure where he's getting that. I'm not sure where he's getting his numbers from. I was doing the math and it didn't make a lot of sense to me. And I don't know if he's misinterpreting something, or I'm not sure what the issue is there. But they were designed to be two feet above the seasonal high water, after. Are you concerned? Okay. Final one, maybe it's the fillet?
No, I think it's the gravel base.
The gravel base, which comment is that?
Um, number three, it's right after. It's on top of the page. Top of the.
Oh, okay, right.
Fourth page.
Okay, so, the applicant has included a gravel base about one foot past the sixteen. We're proposing we put two feet to get to the twenty feet, if that's acceptable to the board, or, because the question is, do you want us to have a twenty foot gravel, traveled way? Or do we wanna have sixteen two and two? And we can revise the plans accordingly. I'll leave it up to the discretion of the board. I think, I don't think this is a huge deal. Obviously, we asked for a waiver to sixteen feet originally, and this is probably a continued comment.
So, describe the solution.
Well, the solution is sixteen foot gravel way with a stickled stone surface with two feet of shoulder on each side giving us twenty feet, or a twenty foot gravel way?
With no shoulder.
With no shoulder.
Sixteen feet of gravel with two feet above are made of gravel versus six, twenty feet of gravel. I mean, it's a distinction without a difference.
Well, it'll be a visual difference.
It would be a visual difference. It's an aesthetics as opposed to functional.
It is creating a hot shoulder instead of a soft shoulder, they tear off.
Yeah.
I mean, and even in gravel, you're gonna get vegetation out of growing that, so you keep.
Right. Which is the reason you do hammerheads rather than cul-de-sacs, because gravel cul-de-sacs don't work, because they just grow into where nobody drives on. So, when you have a hammerhead, they get used and then it stays old. And it'll be the same thing with the gravel way. What typically happens is, where they're not being driven on, you'll get weeds infiltrated.
My preference is the sixteen feet. Two foot, okay.
We'd gravel underneath, right? We'd gravel underneath at two feet.
Yeah, of course.
So. The question about the retention or detention basin?
Detention.
Detention. With the elevations. I don't know how to reconcile it between the two.
Well, I can, I got these comments today, so I haven't had a chance to, like, I put these file additions on for this hearing, just like if I don't have a problem sending it to the consultants, so they can also see. I mean, it's pretty easy math. You know, figure out forty inches, three point two five feet, track it from seventy-three down to seventy. He's got seventy-two point four, and I don't know where that comes from.
Just going through this with you.
Yeah.
Separately, it would seem to me that perhaps he's considering that the uphill, which is uphill?
This is uphill. I mean, this is the high end of the pond. So, that would, if you had a seventy water table down here worth lower, it's not gonna be seventy, it's gonna be sixty-nine, so to say, because it follows the slope. This would be the worst case scenario, as with this. So, the worst case scenario is, this is where, you know, up at the upper end of the pond is the higher end of the pond.
I think you need to come to resolution.
I don't have a problem, I just didn't have a chance to send it out to him, or even just to say, if the spot shots, tell me where you get your numbers. I'm pretty confident we're two feet above the water table here. If we, we need to redesign it, if it comes to that conclusion, we'll redesign.
So, we have the gravel road, we have the retention basins. What was this?
The fillet at the end, and I, I think that's a known issue for country roads like this.
Yeah, if you, you can, here. So, Michael had requested a twenty-five foot pavement radius, which is more than adequate for a road, and this is shown here, which is, you know, sixteen feet outside where the property line is. To put a fillet radius is nonsensical. I mean, we could do it, we could shift the road over and put a fillet here, then you have a strip of land that's gonna be about five feet wide, which is kind of nonsensical.
And he's assuming that the highway department is gonna maintain that paved section.
Well, the reason, and this would go back a long time ago.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. We do the paved aprons, it's just for that reason, essentially. The highway department's gonna maintain Cornell Road. The width of Cornell Road, and this is a variable width, there's no layout in this section of Cornell Road, is very wide in this area from wall to wall. The traveled way, which is only twenty-three feet wide in front of the site.
Sean, I'm just curious, was there a utility pole somewhere in the vicinity of the?
There is an existing utility pole here. Typically, ever so often, maybe pay a lot of money to move the pole over, another pole here to do a drop down, and then run, that's the way we proposed it on this side next to this tree. There was concern about the trees, so we said, why don't we just drop it here, run extra, and then run it under the road to stay away from the tree and its branches to do any cutting or anything you would have to do.
And why you never run the utilities up the east side of the road instead of the west?
They'd be at the squail on the other side.
Was there anything else, Amy?
I don't think so, no, that was it. A lot of the stuff from the last report have been resolved in the revised plans.
Right, right. Like, there were a lot of comments, and most had to do with the waivers and drainage issues and infiltration. We had asked a waiver for the water quality initially. We increased the size of ponds to meet the water quality. We didn't think that was necessarily necessary, but rather than arguing point.
So, can we act it tonight, or do we need to wait till Sean talks to SW Cole?
I, I think that, especially since it's stormwater, and it's kind of out of my wheelhouse, it would be good for Sean and SW Cole to rectify the comments that were made in this letter.
So, also, I'd like to open it to the, anybody in the audience that would like, if you, if you would like to come up to the lectern.
I'm Jacques, Jacques Brunswick, this is my wife Louise Day Jordan.
Could you wait and say it into the microphone?
I'm Jacques Brunswick, and this is my wife Louise Day Jordan, and we own this, this property right here. That's our border. We own a fifty foot strip, we have a frontage on Cornell Road, then a fifty foot strip, and then we own the land behind this development. This, these dotted lines here are easement that we have granted the land trust on our property, so that they can get back to their property, and it will be our way back to our property. And we're very concerned that this spill, these spillways here will go right onto our proposed driveway. We don't have plans at this moment to develop our property, who knows? The, per, per all the sets of comments that we've received from the town's engineer, they request that the developer ask for us, ask us for an easement regarding the stormwater and also the land trust, because it would flow over our property and then onto the land trust property. No one has approached us, nothing's been discussed. We're very concerned about the water. And we don't think, and per the engineer's studies, and per the comments from this report and the earlier report, it's a major concern for us, and I think something that your engineer has pointed out in multiple, multiple reports. So, we can't see this going forward as it currently is, because it impacts our property significantly in terms of the stormwater. And as you can see here, on the, on most of the plans, you can barely see these lines. I'm happy to see that they're emphasized here, but that's, this strip here is the, I think it says somewhere here, here it is, easement. And that easement is for the land trust on our property. We have an easement on their property, reciprocal easement on a portion of their property. Yes.
What happens now with, we've had huge heavy rains the last month.
We don't have a driveway there now.
Yeah, but you still have lots of slope.
But it's a large, large area, and it's not that steep in that section, so there hasn't been any washout there on our property. The ridge is high, you know, and if you, the house that's at the, at the front there, you know, is at the highest point, and then the ridge, our property is on that ridge as well, behind this property. This is not, my understanding, this is not gonna be a public problem. We would not have any access to this road.
Right.
We would not have any access to the utilities, or could we?
Right.
So, those are, those are kind of.
But you have a huge slope of land that's draining down across your driveway and easement.
Not, not that much land now, because it's, it's spread out. I mean, it's, it's not a point. I think that's the main thing that they're pointing out, is that this is, this is here overflow, right here. And it would go, and this is our, this is the proposed, these two dashed lines are proposed. This is the easement.
So, the pre-development, what, what, what Easton Engineer is doing is, is reducing by twenty percent. That's what we were talking about, the drainage, so that after the road's built, you're getting, it's twenty percent less.
But, per your, per your engineer's study, it's maybe twenty percent less, but it's concentrated in a very small area. I'm not an engineer, I'm just wondering what, well, your engi, I mean, I have your engineer's study, which says that that is recommended that they ask for an easement from us.
It's peer review of.
But isn't that what your town's proposed by, with your own engineer's study?
Originally, he came forward with a reduction to not have retention ponds big as that, and then we told him that he had to make the retention ponds big as that. So, he was trying to keep, it was kind of like what we're talking.
I guess I'm confused by the fact that your engineer, in two reports, has asked that they request, you talked to us about an easement, and, and the land trust, because the land trust is, it goes across their land as well, and, and nothing's.
So, what, what the engineer has done for the applicant is reduced the actual flow now by twenty percent in his design.
But if you read here, the study that just came out, and I can read again, considering the preconstruction surface flows were spread out over seven hundred feet, the flows are still concentrated to twenty feet, is what you're reporting. When considering the abutting property downhill, it is about forty feet wide at this point, approximate size of the access road, opening to a larger area in the north. And then it says, if we decided to develop that property by constructing an access road two feet higher, which we could, then it would, it would block all flows from Quarry Ridge Estates flowing to the west. That owner, us, or the association that will be maintaining Quarry Ridge Estates drainage system would be responsible for fixing this potential problem. Requiring the applicant to obtain a flow easement slash agreement currently eliminates this problem in the future. I'm just reading from your report, so.
So, but I think one of the things that we, I forget who pointed it out, but if you raise, if you put in a driveway two feet higher than your land now, you'd be creating a dam as well.
No, because it would flood, we could have it flow on the other side of our property. Our property slows down, his property slows. In other words, our property is on our, you know, we can, we could drain our property along our land, or we could get an easement from the land trust. He has not asked us for any.
No, what I'm saying, whether or not the, the water is coming from the twenty foot area or the seven hundred foot area, if you raise your property by two feet, it's gonna get trapped behind there. That's gonna be flooded between the two feet up and what's to your west. Correct? Whether it's coming, whether it's coming in from twenty feet or seven hundred feet.
Well, or let me put it another way. Our easement has been here, all right? It's on the property, it's been.
I don't care about the easement. I mean, if you, if you raise the level.
This is not a plan that I, I'm.
You're not listening to me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If you raise the level of the road, where, where you could put a road on your easement, or, or on your property, you raise it up two feet, that's gonna cause a damming of the water that's coming over the whole thing, or the twenty foot thing. It would think, seem to me, it would be the same.
You'd have to deal with the drainage, right?
You'd have to deal with the drainage either way.
Different, I think.
It'd be different, but you still have to deal with the drainage in either case.
Except in one case, it's a long strip of land that can absorb some water as opposed to a point.
Well, the applicant was, was proposed that in the first time he was here, to lessen what he just did, and now, after, after that meeting, he agreed to not go for a wire, a waiver to reduce the stormwater containment, and he's followed all the regulations.
I'm just going by your report.
No, I understand.
And I believe that the, the engineering consultant's supposed to verify the little bit, you know, he didn't have a chance to get back to them, and they're supposed to address some, some issues on, I guess, an error in that engineer's report and elevation.
But that, but that doesn't have anything. But that, but that doesn't have anything to do with this one paragraph?
No, it all has to do with all of it. They're reducing the stormwater runoff onto your property by twenty percent.
So...
Well, they're creating stormwater.
Oh, the, the, the existing stormwater flow that exists is being reduced by twenty percent by this plan.
But where the road is, where the new road is, is impermeable, right? So there's more drainage from that new surface.
No, they're, they're reducing, as far as I understand, they're reducing the total water coming off their property onto your property by twenty percent.
But the eighty percent that's remaining is coming out of, out of twenty...
Hundred percent existed today. They're reducing it by twenty like the regulation requires.
So I guess...
I, I guess we're not happy with this.
Well, I understand, but I think we're talking across, across ideas. So I, I would like to ask Sean, when those retention basins fill up, at, at what type of storm do they overflow?
Well, they, they trickle out, you know, on any, but on a hundred-year storm, it's maintained within the pond, and that flow from a hundred-year storm, which is eight-and-a-half inches, which is twice over an eight-hour period that we had last Thursday, which is a necessity if we use the Cornell University rainstorm. They're basically the same flow coming off from that eight-and-a-half-inch rainstorm off that bridge would be the twenty percent reduced coming out of this particular thing. I don't know if you, you have the speed watershed map? It's part, it's part of the set, but I don't know if you have a...
What's the output size, the orifice on the output control?
How big is it? It's a twelve-inch. There isn't, there isn't a tremendous amount of water that's being captured, and I hope if we get to the, I don't know if there's a watershed map somewhere. Maybe the last one? Well, this, there's such a little area here now, and I'll just generalize it as a hundred-and-fifty-foot strip of land along here that's part of the ridge, that we're not talking forty acres of rainwater here. We're talking a hundred-and-fifty-foot strip, a grass strip. So when we're talking flows, and I, I appreciate the concern to the abutters, you know, no one wants to develop next to them flooding them. You hear it all the time. You, the phone call always comes into the planning board, why is this happening? The amount of flow, and I, and I don't have the tabulars in front of me, putting them on, even I'm bringing them, is very little. I think it's like three CFS. It's very, very little for an eight-and-a-half-inch storm because of such a little water. These ponds, I mean, you're talking a pond that's, you know, two hundred feet long and forty feet wide to catch a hundred-and-fifty feet of, we had asked to reduce it for, there was kind of a large infrastructure and a concern from the abutters about, I don't want to see all this infrastructure. So we tried to make it as big and shallow as possible so it looks more like a depression than a, a pond that most people deem as slightly...
So in a, in a storm like we had last Thursday?
That's about, that's about it. Well, it's about, let's say it's four-point-two inches. That's basically a ten-year storm.
Right. So, could I... They would fill up?
It would not, fill up is a relative term. It would, there would be water in the pond, and it would slowly trickle out over time. Yes.
Could, could I say something to, to a couple who has concerns? I think that, I understand your concerns, and I, I think what, there's a couple of things that have caused your concerns. One is someone has asked you for an easement over your property.
No one has, no one has.
No, we haven't.
No one has approached us.
Well, you came up here and said, mentioned, an easement...
That's only, that's in the plan, that's in your engineer's report.
Okay, so...
Says that they should request an easement.
Okay, so if someone mentioned an easement across your property?
Correct. It's just mentioned, it's written in an engineer's...
Okay, so if someone talk, if I found someone mentioning an easement across my property, all kinds of alarm bells would go?
My, my alarm bells are more about, this is a beautiful area with big properties, and what you're creating here is a suburban, very tightly, uh, dense, kind of, as much property as you get out of that. Uh, my wife's mother lived in that house.
And it's the Cornell House, by the way, it's not the Corrie House. It's the Cornell House from the Cornell Road.
And, and this is very, this area is beautiful, right? Cornell Road, beautiful property, large tracts of land. Uh, this is being shoehpered in here very, very tight, and the reality is that it's going to have that, it's going to be that water having this, this road on our property, this work property, um, with three houses there. So it's, it's a, it's a hard thing, and I, and the, and the fact that, I go back to the case that there is concern. Obviously, an engineer has a concern that the stormwater is going to affect your property, and it's been written in two of your reports, you know, and, and I would assume that the town would abide by what the engineers, their engineers have said, and so the town has not asked the developer to approach us, to talk to us about an easement, and, and the developer has not, has not ever approached us about any, so...
So I asked you if there'd ever been an issue with water across your easement, and you said there hadn't been?
Correct.
And, and so, you know, we certainly consider what's in SW Cole's report. We're not making a decision tonight. We have asked Mr. Leach to go back and forth with SW Cole to reconcile numbers. I, but what we're talking about here is not, you know, a mall parking lot that's going to dramatically increase the amount of impervious surface, and, and so I, I think that, yes, you should read the report, but you should also look at what's in the plan in terms of what's going to create more flow. This shows a driveway, and it also shows retention basins that are collecting water, and as Mr. Sauer said, it's designed to reduce the amount of flow by, by twenty percent.
And what about the fact that there are going to be lots of vehicles going back and forth on this road every day, and all kinds of pollutants will be trapped traversing the water, I mean, through the water, right, as, when the storms come, and there's going to be roofs on houses, and there might even be paved driveways off of that hammerhead. I'm going to wager that someone will want to pave your driveway, and that water has not been factored in, the water that's going to come from those driveways.
Well, that water will be on the development of the houses in the Board of Health, and they have, they have infiltration for the, for the same thing. They have the same thing when they go develop each of these three lots.
It's draining in the other direction.
If, if I could, to the chair, the houses are all undecided on the westerly side of the ridge, so none of that water would be heading in this direction, short of having to build them up fifty feet to do that.
Do you have building envelopes anticipated to, to memorialize that?
No, we don't. We don't show up.
No, but they're on the, they're on the other side of the ridge, or...
So that can happen.
It has, has to go down.
The ridge line runs right through the hammerhead.
Yeah, so, yeah, do you have the, do you have the... This is a very steep slope, it's eight percent. That's fairly steep. Same here. It's fairly steep. So the house would be sided along this slope here, basically on the other side of the wall. The hammerhead entrance is here. I don't imagine they'd be siding the house here, or side, but it would still be on the westerly side of the ridge. So everything will be on, and that's in one of the comments actually about addressing the stormwater on the westerly side of the ridge, which is addressed to the Board of Health stormwater regulations.
So the ridge is about where that north-south stone wall is?
The ridge is like right here?
A little bit, uh...
Okay.
Yes, I see the content.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate that the neighbors attend the meeting with Mr. Leach and our consultant and can ask to...
To discuss, well...
It just, because I can understand, you know, what, sometimes, I mean, these plans can be bewildering if you're not a...
We used to own this property.
I, I mean, I understand the concern. I understand, and I appreciate the thought process here. I mean, if they were to develop this roadway in here, they're basically doing the same thing we're doing here, so they would have more of a problem because they're very limited as to what they can do with drainage. They could be wired completely. So if they were wanting to grant an easement, which would behoove them to have that, that would be fine. I don't know if they're willing to do such a thing, but it's not necessary in regards to our development. But we could definitely take care of the elevation issues with the consultant, which I fully expected we were going to. Again, they only got these today.
I'm just trying to find a way for them to, to put their minds at ease, that what you're doing is...
I, I want them to be comfortable. I mean, again, we run into the problem, and as we always do, is, of the abutters, is we just don't want anything to happen here, and that's not a regulation. What we try to do, and what Mr. Giblin, who was the applicant, has tried to do, was do as best he can, and to hide the houses down slopes so that it's not everybody sitting on top of each other. In other words, you'll never see these houses from the road, from Cornell Road, and it's very unlikely you'll be able to see them from anywhere down here, because it's, it's such a steep drop-off. Eight percent, this is like a ten percent slope. It's very steep on either side, extremely.
Sean, if, if the land trust was to develop that driveway to access the land in the back, what would they, what would they be required to do for stormwater?
Well, again, if, you know, the requirement of the stormwater reg, there are exemptions for, some kind of issue, there are exemptions for accessing your upland and everything like that. You still have to address the stormwater on the Board of Health regulations. Go with five thousand square feet, you have to do something to stormwater. So like I said, if you have a fifty-foot strip of land here, you try to put a, let's say, fourteen-foot driveway in here, you have very little room to do anything with the stormwater at that point without the next guy. I mean, right now, everything flows very quickly as this plan exists without any houses here, across this and down this slope, the wetlands to the east, and nothing's going to change, nothing's going to change either. It's just, it's one of these situations where this is on Unique and Westport, where very little weapons on this side of property. Nothing within basically two hundred feet the rest of the property, across wetlands. Typically, you would discharge the weapons, and weapons would attenuate that. So a lot of times, we come international waivers because it's just going to the tiny wetland system, and it's very little impacted. This particular case, on the first go-around, we didn't ask, we asked for a waiver for the twenty percent and the, and the water quality. It was not needed except through the planning board. So we came back, redesigned the plan. We have very large ponds. Like I said, you've got a ridge that's this wide, and the pond's taking half of that. It's kind of like self-defeating system, but it needs to be regulated.
And I think when you guys came in the last time, that was because of the concern of the neighbors and, and what the development would look like, and, and I, I believe you, you're, you're not asking for any stormwater waivers whatsoever, and the waivers that you are asking for are going to keep the quality of the neighborhood.
We're asking for a little infrastructure as possible.
Because you could build a full-blown road in there and have to do it.
I believe Ms. Gijard's brother was concerned about the tree. We, we tried to address that. The walls, as much as they're not walls, they're not anymore. There's rows of stones even around the cemetery have all been dismantled for years, but the plan is to maintain as many as possible because it is part of the character. People, people, you know, buying these lots are going to want to keep the same character instead. That's why you're buying.
Okay, is there anybody else? Yes?
My name's Warren Barker. I live at two-five-four Cornell Road, and I live on that ridge. It continues southwest, and my home burned down in two thousand and eight, and Skip Potter showed up to put a no-septic system in, and he said, "The drainage here is fabulous." And so I thought, "Well, that's great." And I have to admit, I was a little chubring when I learned that drainage is so great that I, my home contributes to nitrogen loading of the west branch. And so that was disappointing. One of these hammerhead developments, I put in my, not in my backyard, near me, on the Katzenbach property, which is just down the road a little bit, I was amazed how, what kind of access it can provide. And, but having been involved with the West Branch Association, we had deed restrictions on the Katzenbach property, the last generation signed up, and so the land closest to the river couldn't be developed, which seemed to be a win. But when I look at this, I just think that it's not in keeping with the whole movement to make the two aquifers, Moser Brook and Angeline Brook, safe, that all that trustee's land, trying to tie it up, those aquifers and protect them. And then I see this, which I know that the drainage is going to be great, and I'm sort of, it's more question, John, than anything. If you put the houses over in this area, it, it's precipitous. I mean, it falls off, and, and why isn't just the septic systems, I'm not talking runoff anymore, the septic systems just feed the Moser Brook and pond, and Angeline's off to the east, and they have to be a little bit this way to drain down there. It seems that our major concern is always about the road, and that's your bug, I think. But in terms of the whole shooting match, as my mother would say, with the houses jeez by jowl, I would think there'd be quite, quite a contribution to nitrogen loading, whatever you want to call it.
So, Mark, they...
I'm only running this by you because that's what's on my mind.
Yeah.
And I'd love, I tried to figure out how we could get the owners to donate the center to, and get it contiguous with the trustee's land, and somehow make it, from a tax point of view, sort of appealing so only two houses were able to protect it. But I, I just thought I voiced a concern. Thanks.
Okay, so with the nitrogen load, with the nitrogen load, the Board of Health for new development like this requires de-nitrifying septic systems. They do? They do.
He stole my thunder. No, he stole my, he stole my thunder. Yeah, I mean, all these will have de-nitrifying, obviously, because that's what the regulation requires, de-nitrifying regulation, right? Express the concern. And with the vegetated buffer and the wetland large wetland system that's actually, starts from here, but actually goes over here, there's actually a gravel driveway that comes through here and for this to Moser Pond. The nitrogen loading, yeah, there'll be a slight increase, but there are, they're all going to be required de-nitrification, and they're all going to require move drains. As Mr. Barker said, the drainage here is good. C-type soils, it's very gravelly. It's underneath, it's, that's why you, you talk about you didn't have to treat all over a hundred-and-fifty feet. You don't get a lot of runoff. There is no large flow. I don't want to think that there's a fire hose coming out of the ponds or anything like that. There's going to be salmon swimming upstream in nature or something.
Anybody else? You?
I just need to get Mr. Brunswick's address. It's at Cornell Road, but no number. What's your number?
Um, there is no house, so...
Oh.
I don't think it has a number.
Okay, I need your address.
Or home address, seventy-three, Paesin Avenue.
Paesin?
P-A-Y-S-O-N, New York, New York.
So is, is Clem, are Clem and Richard your brothers?
Yes. Marla's my sister.
So should, should we be continuing this?
I think we should continue it, I think the only issue is, is the elevation of these ponds.
The resolution of the groundwater levels.
Right. My opinion is fairly easy, but...
I mean, the, the plan complies with subdivision rules and regulations, the road complies with our subdivision rules and regulations. Yes, there'll be three homes there, but we don't get to decide that. We decide whether or not plans comply or don't comply.
So I'm assuming, so for the purpose of my discussion with S.W. Cole, that these 16-foot gravel, two-foot shoulders is adequate?
Yes, that's where we ended up.
Okay.
In, in your description of the ridgeland, I was sketching as you spoke, and it's, having it be 150 feet wide is generous. In some places, it's probably 40 feet wide.
Yeah, that's why I was hoping to have the watershed map, and, yeah, I mean, I'm just generalizing, I guess is a good word.
So Bob...
How much time do you need, Sean, to work out the differences with...
If I can contact, if I can get in touch with him this week, I don't know, I, I'm assuming two, four weeks. I mean, I don't, I, I know you have two weeks, I'm back in front of you on another issue that I've inherited. But if it's four weeks, that's fine, I mean, if you want to get a clean letter, I don't know, you know, what the tone is, but I'm not sure he's ever gonna agree on a lot of things. But this, this thing should be very simple.
So, just one caveat about scheduling.
Yeah.
And you're one of the people who schedule, schedule us, is that when we schedule something, it takes a slot, it's your slot.
Okay.
And if you say, "Well, we didn't get to it, so we're gonna continue," without any hearing, it means that somebody else couldn't be there.
Understood.
So...
I mean, I just don't, I mean, I can't see taking it down the road for two months for a very simple thing.
So, Sean, you think it's just a verification of the groundwater elevation, and you have test pits already?
Yeah, we have test pits, and I submitted soil evaluation forms to, that's why I don't understand what the...
So, I, I mean, do you think that we could approve it subject to S.W. Cole's review of the reports that Sean submitted to him?
I don't know if you want to disclose the public part of the hearing and just...
No, I, if they're right and you're wrong.
Right.
You're gonna have to come back to us with something else anyway.
Correct.
So why don't we just schedule it out for the next meeting and the meeting after that?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion on that if you want.
Please.
I could aim you about a day. I move we continue the Quarry Ridge Estates public hearing for June 18th at 6:15.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the 435 Old Harbor Road, file number 23-037 SPA public hearing. This is continued from January 9th and January 23rd, '24, and March 19th, '24. Requested by the applicant to consider converting the existing residence into an adolescent education and housing facility. Applicant is requesting a continuance until July 16th, '24.
Want a motion?
Please.
Mr. Chair, at the applicant's request, I move to continue the public hearing for 435 Old Harbor Road to July 16th, 2024 at 6:30.
Second.
Just a question. The assistant planner said last, last meeting, I think, that this applicant had not paid, was in arrears on payment up there.
On the consultant review, they were, but they have, they have paid since then.
Because I, fine.
We wouldn't be continuing that one.
All right, just checking.
Good question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the 645 public hearing for 720 and 725 Old County Road, as, file number F24003SP-CD, continued from April 2nd, 2024. The applicant is requesting a modification to the special permit common driveway. The applicant is also requesting a continuance to June 18th, '24.
Want a motion, please? Mr. Chair, at the applicant's request, I move to continue the public hearing for 720 and 726 Old County Road to June 18th, 2024 at 6:30.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Assistant planners' report?
My report was mostly the review for Quarry Ridge, so I will hand it off to...
Okay, planners' report?
Town meeting update, for those of you who weren't at town meeting, the, the motion to rezone the unrestricted district to the rural agriculture, or the agricultural residential district that carried. So that's been rezoned, and working on getting our web map updated to reflect that. The, also the definition for congregant living that carried, so that's now been incorporated into the zoning bylaws. The motions for short-term rentals and changing the way the planning board looks at minimum lot width, those both failed. And so as a follow-up to that, the short-term rental committee, I think they will end up meeting as a, as a follow-up meeting to town meeting. I discussed with the chair, Roger Menard, and it sounds like that's something he would like to do. But I think as this is a subcommittee of the planning board, I think at this time, the planning board could provide them a recommendation as to what the boards, what the board's opinion is on that committee moving forward.
On the committee or on the short-term rental situation?
About this particular committee continuing to exist, same sort of staff and...
So, I, I believe that the short-term rental issue is not going away. And is going to be even more pronounced than it was before town meeting vote. And if the short-term rental committee doesn't come up with another bylaw suggestion, I think somebody by petition will come with a request. And town meeting, the town will be forced to have another town meeting to consider that. Because there's so many people that have already accepted deposits on rentals, they continue to, to do it. I think if town meeting gave it really terrible idea of what to do. I think Roger Menard made it clear that there was two choices. One, to approve it, so that if you wanted to amend the days, amend the days. But to have it still as not allowed use when we have probably hundreds of people that do this is really a disservice to the town.
I mean, isn't the state collecting?
The state is collecting taxes, and we get a portion of that. And, you know, should the town send out a blanket letter to everybody in town to cease and desist, you can't do short-term rentals? I mean...
I'm not sure how the town would be able to go about doing that, just because the Department of Revenue doesn't provide the addresses of short-term rentals. And typically on a short-term rental website, you're not gonna be able to see the address until you actually fill out, you know, let's say, so...
But the town could send a letter to everybody.
Yeah, I guess it could be to literally everyone, but...
Mr. Chair, I have a question, I'm sorry, I missed the meeting, I was in the hospital, but is it your impression that, I mean, this is an industry in a sense? Did the industry support this, or did the industry oppose this at town meeting?
I don't think the industry opposed, we, we had the people that came to our hearings.
Yeah, did they oppose it, or did they...
Well, so, at, at the meeting, there was a lot of discussion, as you can imagine. And there was an amendment, a proposed amendment to change it from seven-day minimum to two-day minimum.
Yeah.
And then there was a lot of discussion about that. And then I think somebody called a question on the amendment, and then the amendment failed.
Yeah.
So then we're back to seven days.
Yeah.
Then there was a lot of discussion, I can't remember if somebody called a question or not, but there were people lined up all over the place to talk about it. And I think there was a feeling that, that the town was pushing this use on the town. When it is just an anomaly of our zoning bylaw that you can't rent out a dwelling or a room or anything for less than 31 days. Because that is, by the state's definition, a short-term rental. And a lot of...
And it's a business.
It's a business. And so it's not allowed per town council. And we used that against one of the ones that was really just a business, somebody bought a house just to do this on Sandpiper Lane. So, town meeting, town meeting was popu... Town meeting was populated with people who didn't want sewer and didn't want the planning board zoning articles. So there were 600 people, and at least half or more were against all that. So they voted against all these things, especially this one. And the, the, the problem I have with the way town meeting works is that I make a presentation of a zoning article, and everybody else gets up and talks. And you get multiple people standing behind microphones and start saying things that are just not true. And I, as the proposer, have no ability to get up and say, "That's not true." And so what people have in their heads when they go to vote is all this other stuff.
Yeah.
And we really need to pass some kind of article that allows rentals that are short-term, not just Airbnbs, but people who rent out their house. People have a family cottage that's been in their, their, their family for years and years, and they rented out to Joe Blow, and they've done it for 25 years. And that guy rents it for three days, or three weeks in the, in June. You can't do that anymore.
Well, do you need a motion to continue the, to work with the zoning board and others on this issue for the future presentation, the town meeting? Or is, would, would you want a motion?
You don't, I don't think you need a motion to continue the, the short-term rental committee, but...
I think we need a motion to, to say that we should continue it.
Right, because in order for, you know, if the short-term rental committee were to start meeting again, and the planning board said, "No, you know what, we don't wanna take up this issue again." Then, you know, they would need to wrap up and prove some minutes and then dissolve the committee.
Well, I, I'm getting different things, the chair says we should and...
Oh, no, I, I'm kinda saying the same thing, yeah.
We need to continue the committee.
Okay, so you don't need a motion?
We need a motion to do that.
All right, I would move.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
With respect to, before you make your motion, that I under, I mean, this is, just having been on the committee and seen all sides and heard all the arguments, problem, con. And it's such a convoluted, very contentious issue. And I can see us spending another 12 months on this and going back to town meeting and becoming another Nantucket. I mean, they've turned down short-term rental proposals several times.
Including, what, a couple weeks ago?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's happened in many other towns, just because it is so difficult, there's so many points of view, and people are so adamant about their, their point, their side. So, and it's sort of, you can't please any, you know, you'll never please everybody, obviously. So, I don't know, I, I'm willing, I guess, I'm saying I'm willing to serve on the committee again, but I can see it ending up being another futile attempt.
The, the difficulty is, it is such a longstanding, accepted tradition, you know, virtually everyone I know has rented a cottage. You know, I mean, it's not like, "Oh, well, whoa, whoa, this is, this is a strange thing," like everyone does this. And, and then we have the legal determination saying, those, that activity less than 31 days is essentially a business. And businesses are not allowed in the residential district. So now we have this legal opinion, and what we try to do is to say, "Well, let's make it permitted," which is what we did. And then say, then we had to find what, what a short-term rental is, and there was a lot of debate about that. Is it, is it two days, is it three days, is it, is it five days? Is, is it, you know, that, you know, and we had people say, "Well, you know, we had a funeral, my brother flew in, he had stayed just one night," you know. You know, and then, and then we said, "Well, it won't, we, the town won't regulate it because it's, it's an allowed use." What we'll do is, but, but in order to be responsive to the, the questions of, like, where is this going on, and what, you know, who's doing it, and who's renting it? We said, "Just do a self-registration with the, with the building department so that if something happens, we know who to contact." And, and I don't know if, if, if the, the will of the town people is, "Well, yeah, you can make it an allowed use, but you can't do anything about it." You know, if that's, is that, is that where it is? You know, you can say, "Well, why don't we leave it like it is then?" But it, you can't.
I mean, we did mention in the, in the select board last night, and I, and I think that the committee's gotta continue to move on with it. But, you know, one of the, one of the problems that I see is these historical families that, that did this, and this new business that's coming on the scene. And I think that's kind of what shot it down, the new business coming on the scene. So one of the things I did mention in there is, is, you know, because now they're saying, "Well, how are we gonna, it's illegal, so legal says it's illegal, we're gonna enforce it." Like, the zoning enforcement office is gonna be real busy shutting all these things down.
No, I don't think...
Well, these, these, these historical cottages that were in these families, I mean, wouldn't that be pre-existing non-conforming? If they've done it, if they've done it forever, right? I mean, it's not a new area being big, it's, you know, because you have some of these people that are just, that income is how they survive. And that's how they're keeping this cottage in the family and all this other stuff. And some of them have done it for 100 years. I mean, what happens, you're gonna say, "Oh, you can't do that now?"
No, the whole point of it was to say, "You can do it now."
Right, but that's what I'm saying, these people are afraid, and that's, they, they weren't educated on what's gonna happen here, and they're just gonna lose their minds.
So the reason I think we should continue, I, I lost my first election for mayor, then I won. Just 'cause you lose doesn't mean you give up, because losing can be part of the educational process. And, and I think that's what I consider, this is, this is all part of the educational process about, about this. So I, I would move that, considering that air, that short-term rentals are part of Westport's history. But the trend in what they are turning into is a threat to the character... but the trend in what they are turning into is a threat to the character of Westport. And despite the defeat at town meeting, this problem is not going away. It is in fact getting worse. And there are legal issues in that short-term rentals are technically illegal. We do have a problem that needs to be solved. And so I recommend that the committee continue to work with the zoning board, members of the industry, and it is an industry, to find a way to improve the suggested answer to this problem for submission to the select board and town meeting.
Is there a motion?
There was a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, continue.
I think the question was seconded up.
Bob Daley did.
Did you get the whole motion?
Yeah, that motion was like eight paragraphs.
We have contracted with PAR Engineering to draft a, it's basically drafting a whole new hazard mitigation plan. The plan is twenty years old, so they're gonna be rebuilding it from the ground up. And Bob, Jim, you'll both be on there. I'm recruiting a number of different folks from the police department, fire department, harbor master, the whole works. So I met with PAR last week and hoping to get started up sometime next month.
How about somebody from the Board of Health?
Oh, yeah, someone, I, that wasn't an exclusive list. Board of Health, reaching out to different nonprofits. They'd like some representation from businesses as well. So if you have any, actually, I was gonna ask you all, if you have any businesses that are, you have any contacts for people who own businesses in vulnerable locations and think they might want to participate in this?
Trips.
Okay.
Trips, backhitting.
Well, but do you have contact information for those people?
Yeah.
Carlethorpe or trips.
Probably the oyster, Kirsten.
Yeah, the oysters.
Do you have, I have Kirsten's.
You have Kirsten?
Yeah, email.
And, you know, all those fishing boats are their own, you know, individual businesses. You could get that from the harbor master.
Yeah, mhm. Yeah, Chris emailed me tonight and said, keep me updated. So Harbor Master will be, be on those meetings. I was going to have an update on our online permitting because I thought we were going to have a vendor buy this meeting, but we haven't contracted with anyone yet. So that'll hopefully be wrapped up by the time for our next meeting. Regarding the coastal zone management grant application, I've been talking to, you know, blanking on the name of the firm's name.
Courtney was on the doorstep when we came in this morning, or this morning.
She was, we had, earlier today, we had an MVP meeting. So it's a GZA. I've been in contact with GZA to see if they'll help us out with a grant application, so the coastal zone management grant. They said that they were interested, so hopefully Chris Capone and I can, we're gonna try to connect with them sometime this week or next week, talk about pulling together an application.
For?
Coastal Zone Management Grant to develop a beach management plan. So that'd be for East Beach and other area beaches. And then last weekend, or last weekend, last week, I met with the town of Dartmouth and the city of New Bedford. I was over in Dartmouth for this meeting. We're working on coordinating a bikeway from Fall River to New Bedford. We've already started with applying to the Mass Trails Grant to create the stub from Fall River into Westport. The route, from that meeting, we've kind of coalesced on having a joint application through the Transportation Improvement Program to improve Route Six. That seems to be the most, would have the most utility as a transportation network. There was a route considered and what, so from Westport it would go up to Old Bedford Road and then continue off to New Bedford that way. There's significantly fewer points of access on that, that route to roadways and businesses and residences. So the, kind of the, the route that would bring the most benefit would be on Route Six. And then also we can, it's easier to tap the state to get those funds as well. So this is apparently somewhat of a higher priority statewide bikeway network. So hoping we can continue getting some, keeping some momentum going with this project and...
I think they're trying to get from Providence to the Cape, right?
All, yeah, from Providence all the way to the Cape, yeah.
Well, what do people do? You mean, you're gonna have people biking to work on the one with six? It's not a view, because if you're a bike, these weekend people, they wanna go through these country roads. They're not gonna go along with six.
Right, so the, the, the point of, this would be more of a transportation network. So the, actually, I learned in this meeting that the SRTA route that goes from Fall River to New Bedford is the most heavily used route in their system. And so if you're thinking about trying to create connections to that, you know, non-motorized connections to that route, a bike path could be helpful to help, you know, give that last mile connection for people trying to access from different parts of town and New Bedford and Dartmouth.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it would support one of these bike rental companies, you know, where you pick up your bike in Fall River and you go to New Bedford.
And, and that's not to say that we shouldn't pursue both bike routes. I think there's value in having both the more scenic, the more recreational path through a more rural area and then having the one that is a little bit more oriented towards getting people from point A to point B. So, and I think our colleagues in Dartmouth and New Bedford also see value in having the more recreational one, but for now prioritizing the type of network that would transport people from point A to point B, especially because when you're going and applying for different state funds, they're going to look at access to environmental justice neighborhoods and, you know, the concentration, population concentrations that you're going to get along Route Six and access to businesses that you'll get along Route Six than you would from a recreational trail. So that's why that's prioritized. But I think everyone there agreed the recreational one would be an asset to the greater community. It's just when you're trying to go get those funds, it's gonna be a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not promoting the recreational route because it does create a lot of issues with very narrow roads and blockage. You know, it's dangerous frankly because bikers go off and they're in groups and they don't hug the shoulder, they're two or three across sometimes and then they... So I watch cars trying to get around and just another car's coming the other direction.
We have that problem in Harbor during some of the big bike things.
So the goal...
You can't get out.
So it's a two-edged sword. I mean, it's nice to have the recreation.
The intent for this would be for it to all be a separated trail. So a shared-use trail that's separate from the roadway. Now with the Route Six option, there are some locations where it might have to be just due to, due to limited right-of-way width. Particularly, they called out some locations in Dartmouth where they actually need to maintain the capacity of two lanes in both directions. It's gonna restrict the ability to have a separate bike lane from the road network. So what they're, what we're thinking is, is, you know, road network and then having a buffer strip in the center and then the shared-use trail. In parts of Dartmouth, the surplus thinks that there's not gonna be the width available to do something like that. But for a recreational trail, the thought was for that northern route to also have it completely separate from the road network as well.
You know, I was originally thinking Route Six is a crazy place to encourage bike traffic. But now that you mention it as part of the transportation system, I think in New Bedford, you know, the most bicycle traffic is seafood workers going, Central American seafood workers going from the north end along MacArthur Drive down to the processing plants in the south end. And it's not recreation, it's how to get to work when you don't own a car. So you're absolutely right about that one.
That's one thing the planner from New Bedford had said, is that they get substantial amount of use from that community, particularly for that, that purpose.
They do the same in Newport. My nephew has a restaurant there and they, all the people that work in all the stores and restaurants and everything, they mostly bicycle, so...
But, that's it. So notice of decision to convert an existing single-family structure into a detached one-bedroom accessory structure. They granted that special permit. And a butter notification at 795 Pine Hill Road, application for a special permit to convert a portion of an existing structure into a detached one-bedroom accessory apartment of eight hundred sixty-six square feet. A notice of decision for the Bayside Restaurant to expand the outdoor seating area to include a non-deck shelf area approximately eighteen hundred square feet front of the existing wooden deck area. And they granted that request. A butter notification for 17 Franklin Avenue to separate, they're looking for a variance to separate two dwellings onto their own individual lots, such drawings. I mean, this a butter notification's a little confusing.
Don't they have to come to the planning board to get a soup dough? If they're gonna split their lots?
They did that already.
They did that already? So why do they need a...
They separated the lots last year.
So they made two lots out of one? So what do they need from the zoning board? To make them buildable?
They can be for us.
I'll follow up on that and see what that's about. Butter notification at 672 River Road, request for special permit to construct a two-story garage that will include a detached one-bedroom accessory apartment, no larger than nine hundred square feet. And that brings us to meeting minutes.
I guess accessory apartments are gonna be the hot thing.
Mr. Chair, there are three sets of minutes which I've read. I cannot move the April sixteenth because I was absent, but I can move approval of April second and...
May seventh.
May...
Twenty-third.
Yes, so I move approval of those two sets of minutes.
And I will move the minutes of April sixteenth, I have a statement.
Okay, do we have a second to town?
Seconds.
Okay.
Do you mean April twenty-third?
So let's, let's vote them individually.
All right, I move April second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
April, April twenty-third.
You move April sixteenth. I vote the adoption of the minutes of April sixteen.
Second.
April twenty-third. Sixteenth or twenty-third? Okay.
Call of vote.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move April twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Invoices, WB Mason Stylus Pen for iPads, twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I move we approve the WB Mesa invoice for twenty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Matters not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours? Hearing none?
Move the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.